Well, I don't want to start me.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
When you're trying to calculate the calories, I think it's a way of.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
I was wrong.
Oh, right.
For this guy. I just heard of this guy, so.
Basically.
I don't.
It was nine. Right. Okay. I already have. Yeah, I brought all of my. General instructions. I have, I have a fire box. Or do I have to?
Smart.
Well, you know, all the stuff. No. I know this might be. I mean, animals would suffer. Okay. If you want a really big case. This is I'm a broker. Expert. Part of us. Thank you.
Say. I don't think either of us can stay.
Are you getting the audio going, Anta? Are you getting the audio? Okay, Jennifer, Jennifer just texted.
I can't hear anything.
So are we ready to go?
Just to remember that the sound quality and the zoom and the recording last time was. It could miss, so just try and read that.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the December rescheduled meeting of the Trinity of Planning Commission on Wednesday, December fourteenth. First item on our agenda is a roll call.
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner.
You're here.
Commissioner Hopkins.
You're here.
Commissioner.
You're here.
Commissioner Stotts.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of one set of minutes from our last meeting on October nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Are there any questions, comments? Corrections to the minutes? Hearing none and seeing.
Okay, so. Page. We had seven. It's seven, just one, two, three.
Diane, could you speak up just a little bit? I suspect that we weren't going to hear it.
Okay, so yes. One, two, three. It's an article. There was a discussion about ADA compliance versus reasonable accommodation. But ADA protection mandatory. And so the reasonable accommodation will, at its solitary, is that right?
Yes, so this reasonable accommodation is requested by the property owner or the tenant. As opposed to something that is mandated on a business to have ADA accessibility.
Okay, and then what was that afternoon H C D?
Uh.
Okay, and then. Okay, so it talks about the order of primary resources. And then. The non-protected president. Can you understand?
Secondary one.
On the present, but not, not, not an A B U.
An A B U, yes.
This is, oh, okay. Okay, so the second page of the page four. You're going to find. Um. And whatever circumstances do not include a requirement to notify neighbors of reasonable accommodation request. But when you already wanted this. Packets, I think it was the community design, you. The name.
Awesome. Yes, that's, that's different. So. So. If, if a reasonable accommodation request require a permit like design review, that still has to come to the planning commission. So this would be something that would be exempt from design review and normally exempt from permits. It could be approved administratively and neighbors would not have to be.
Okay, and then of course, I don't want to leave the commission without. Page six. There was a discussion about crosstalk. Vegetation maintenance is a topic of significant political interest. They wish to change the person to. So. We're not going to have to. They.
Yeah, so it changed to just. Not that the city would have a vegetation management plan, but that they would manage vegetation in a certain.
Okay, I think that was enough. Okay. Richard, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, corrections? Hearing and seeing none. Just a motion to. Prove the minutes. I'm going to approve the minutes.
Second.
Move the second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All good. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Yes, are approved unanimously. And just for the record, I would just like to make a couple of comments before we move on. First of all, again, for the record, thank you, Diane, for your service. Really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, we've been here together quite a while.
Well, a few years.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The other thing, I just wanted to congratulate those who were reappointed or appointed to the commission for. Starting in two thousand twenty-three. Commissioner Hackenin has been re, well, for the first full term. Thank you very much. And Chris Slay, who was there. I think he's there somewhere. Congratulations, Christopher. Thank you very much for signing up and we look forward to meeting and working with you next month. So thank you very much. Great. Okay. Um. Yeah.
And one more thing.
We having some technical difficulties.
I think so.
Wait.
They're working on it. And last night, council. By Cheryl and Gaylord. Well, it's me doing it, that's Michelle Kelly.
Why are you saying this? Don't even. Done. Yeah. Very large. Okay. What? Okay, there's more cake if you want to.
Lots.
We're back on.
There's an echo out here. There's an echo. A little bit of a delay coming up. It's.
Little bit of latency.
With the two city clerk. Could that do it or?
Yeah.
Only answer once.
Okay, are we ready to proceed?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, I just have one more thing I'd like to say. I just wanted to thank staff, both here and not here, for all their hard work this year. Really appreciate it. And. We, I think we accomplished a great deal this year. Again, thank you very much for your help and assistance in doing so much. Really appreciate it. And pass that on to those members of the staff who are not here. Basically here. So thanks, thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, where there is an echo. Rule of the agenda. We have three items on our agenda for public hearing, discussion, decision, and action tonight. Are there any suggested corrections or changes to the agenda? Hearing none or seeing none, your motion to approve the agenda as.
Make a motion, turn it through.
Second.
Okay, moved on second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Favor say aye. Closed. And it is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is items from the floor. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the planning commission on any item other than those which are on our agenda this evening. I would. request that you keep your comments to a maximum of thirty, uh, excuse me. Thirty seconds. Uh, three minutes. I'm glad, is there any public comment at this point? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on then to the next item, which is agenda items. First one is housing related zoning ordinance update. And let's, F G's move.
Um, I've got a lot of new information to report because we recently just made the edits uh, that we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, I looked at some additional ordinances and kind of read their process and some additional edits as well. Uh, I spoke with the building code official and the the building code. So reasonable accommodation requests will have to be in the building code. So the building code has its own requirements for ADA accessibility and that sort of thing. So this one, uh, it's an exception, so I declare that. Um, and then a question came out of the last meeting about what kinds of projects would qualify for a reasonable accommodation request. And I, I was thinking of, uh, the San Luis Obispo County. I don't think we need to add something like this to our ordinance necessarily, but it's just an example, um, to maybe a little bit more context.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. So I'm just asking you to continue to read the over. And then you just feedback, um, if you're happy with it, then, um, when you are ready to do so, you can recommend it to the city council.
Okay. Any comments, questions, clarifications from the commissioners for staff? Uh, I had, uh, just a general comment, uh, in the, uh, staff report. And on page two, the adjustments prohibited. I think I understand why and there may not be any way in which we can address it otherwise, but uh, the sentence says adjustments may not include accommodations which would impose an undue financial or administrative burden, and I assume they mean the city. But the, the issue of undue financial or administrative burden. Maybe it's pretty vague. And I think it, well, I, I realize why it is vague, but at the same time, uh, it's kind of in the eye of the beholder as to what would be a, uh, administrative burden. So, um, I don't know, is there any way in which that could be crisscrossed or do we want to leave it that way? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just, it just presents to me kind of an open-ended way in which somebody could nickel and dime quote, unquote, uh, the city for, uh, administrative work. And it may not be perceived as a, uh, small burden, but maybe a larger one.
So, well, I'm not necessarily proposing this language, but that language already is in the ordinance, uh, on page six. It's kind of the and it's, that does seem to be pretty standard language in these ordinances. I saw it in almost every ordinance and I'm not sure exactly, I mean, I, I sort of understand the administrative frustration. So, you know, giving one person an exception, does it mean you have to give everybody an exception? Um, but that's not, I think this ordinance is written, so that doesn't have to happen. Um, I'm not sure why that language is in every ordinance, but it does seem to be there.
Well, I, it, yeah, maybe it's more of an editorial comment, but it's, I'm just. Okay, thank you.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a finding, I, you know, I could check with the city attorney whether he's comfortable just taking that out.
Well, item E on page six does indicate that it's interpretive case law, so I'll let him do that. Could be his interpretation. Okay, I'm fine with it. That just raised. Okay, uh, so this is fairly straightforward. Um, as is customary, we generally just take it page by page, is that acceptable to everybody? And if you have questions or clarification, requests, clarifications, then we'll, we'll take them as we need to. So plow right into this. Uh, page one. Any comments or questions on page one? Last time I did say at the bottom policy HP two dot two encourage. I still don't like encourage.
Uh, so I, I know, and I had that note, but I did not change it because that is the policy in the adopted housing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. All right, thank you.
Um, I guess I just have one comment on page one or an observation, and this is perhaps telegraphing where the rest of my comments are going to go tonight, but nowhere on page one does it talk about limiting primary and secondary residences of people in this, uh, this ordinance here in the whereas sections, it just talks about fair housing. So I just wanted to make that observation, but in this section of the document, we don't have that limit. And then I guess I'll have more comments as we go on, on that subject.
So you have more comments on that?
Yeah, as we get into the meeting.
Okay. Even also page one. It's two. It's three. It's four. It's four. I had a comment on, um, application requirements, item one. Once again, I, uh, it, it says payment of the fee established by resolution of the city council. An applicant may seek a reasonable accommodation for payment of fees. Do I interpret that to mean that the city council will establish a fee rate? And then the applicant then can ask for a reduction in that payment?
That would be the idea, that although financial hardship is not a disability. I did see that in a couple of ordinances and I think we discussed that at the last meeting, um, but it certainly, but yes, that would be the idea.
I, I guess that's probably a result of my comment at the last meeting, just ensuring that whatever process we put in place doesn't have fees that are going to become a barrier to fair housing opportunity for somebody. Okay, I guess a follow-up question on that for you, Trevor, for staff is, um, if, let's say it's their primary residence and they're, they're just doing a standard variance that you anticipate being able to do administratively, that would just be a routine set of fees to Ross, he would go through it and that's that, right? So based off the project and whatever else he needed to do versus if it's coming before the planning commission, then that automatically necessitates a seven hundred fifty dollar deposit, doesn't it? Down towards your time and then we build towards that or help me understand?
No, so, um, if, if the request was a structural addition that required design review, then yes, design review is required, um, as part of it. Um, but if it is more of a, an interior change or a ramp that would require design review or a parking change and parking requirements, um, that would be um,
Same.
It would be a fee, yeah, so I, I imagine normally, um, for an administrative permit, there's one fee and then if it has to go to the planning commission, there would be another fee. So I imagine there would be two tiers of fees for that, but it's not the seven hundred and fifty dollar deposit.
Okay, but if it does have to come before us, then it will be a different.
I would assume, so, yes.
Any comments on, uh, page four? Page five.
So our, um, how's the commission feel about the language about seeking the reasonable accommodation for fees and I I mean, the, the question then is, do I approve that administratively or does that have to go to the council? Have to think about that.
I, I'm sorry, not quite following what you mean.
So the, the language, an applicant may seek reasonable accommodation for payment of fees as well. And I'm not sure if that's something I would approve administratively, I guess. I have to think that through, how that process would occur.
You know, if, if the city council is establishing the by resolution, the fee schedule, then it would seem to me that any deviation from that should go to the city council.
That's normally, you know, if someone doesn't want to pay a fee, it normally goes to the council.
Right.
But Ross would know the fees, right? Well, we haven't said them yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything on four?
If that would, since reasonable was used sometimes in this, this, the city council would set what is reasonable, what is basically, if somebody really wanted to push it. So then it would go before city council, everybody could talk about it and decide what is reasonable.
Yeah, so the fees would be set at a public meeting. Um, fees are generally have to be based on what it actually costs the city to process something. Um, so, you know, we kind of have to have an estimate of, of what that would look like. Um, and that's, you know, for, for planning projects that come to the planning commission, those are difficult, more difficult to predict, which is why it's a full cost recovery. So the seven fifty is a deposit and then you pay the actual cost processing. This I imagine would be one of the.
Further discussion on the side? Yeah, moving on to page five.
Um, I guess I'll just go on record voicing, uh, I guess total opposition to number nine, uh, verifying that it's a primary residence. I think that I just cannot accept or nor wrap my head around differentiating between a primary and a secondary residence for somebody. And that one has to come before us and one doesn't. I, I don't see the logic between that. I question whether or not that would stand up as a legal challenge, um, against the city. I think if, if we, if the bulk of the commission decides to head that direction, I would encourage us to maybe check it with the, you know, legal counsel before. I just, I just don't understand that logic and it seems to me currently, we don't have any that I'm aware of, um, off the top of my head, you know, accessible rentals in town. So if somebody wanted to turn an S T R into that, for example, it's pre-existing and they want to make it accessible, we're putting a barrier in place by asking them to be handled separately and come before us instead of just being an administrative permit that they would receive. It was their primary residence. So I just have a lot of heartache and I just can't support that.
I, so I will say to that, I, I mean, I think that was a decision that was sort of what the majority wanted last time. I don't necessarily have strong feelings either way. Um, I could see both ways. Uh, I did see several ordinances that did require it. It had to be a primary residence period for a reasonable accommodation request. So I, I'm guessing it's legally defensible, um, but that would be a question for the attorney we could run by. Um, you know, in terms of S T Rs, and I think, uh, long-term rental to me is a little different than an S T R. Um, and, you know, I wouldn't want somebody with an S T R who can't meet the parking requirements, for example, say, oh, I want a reasonable accommodation request to reduce parking requirements. Um, so I want to be careful to avoid that. Um, but yeah, so I, I think it's, I think you can do it. I think it's just a question of what, what the commission wants to do.
So what would happen if the property owner made the application? For an auxiliary dwelling unit?
Well, so uh, the ordinances I saw, it would be, it was generally the owner, but it could be on behalf of a tenant, so it could be a rental. Um, but in my, in some of the ordinances I saw, even if it was a tenant, it had to be the tenant's primary residence. But you don't have to be, not every ordinance had that, so.
So I, I, are we getting confused between primary and secondary dwellings on a property? Or are we talking primary residence that, that someone lives there on a regular basis versus?
I guess, well, yeah, I guess, am I confused on that? Are we talking, let's say I own two homes, one in Sacramento, and then I have a second home here. It's not my primary residence. The way I'm interpreting this, and if I'm wrong, then fantastic, I'd love to be wrong. Is that, that would need to come before the planning commission as is written today, that's the intent.
Yes, so it's not about an A B U.
Right.
It's about where you live.
And that's where I guess I have the heartache over this issue is that I don't understand why it makes a difference if it's my primary residence or my secondary residence.
How do they know?
Because.
I mean, literally, I mean, how would they know?
Well, if we're not going to verify it, why have it in here? I guess it'd be my other question.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Well, we would, so, um, we do have in our S T R ordinance to have a home share or the resident S T Rs, it has to be a primary residence. And so we can talk about, there are ways to verify that, that, um, the owner's exemption on your property tax bill, for example. So that, that would, that's primarily what it is.
Oh, I mean, I think my brief inquiry was suggesting this or in our previous meeting, uh, was just as a way to, I guess, I mean, maybe I'm pushing a larger agenda here of, um, trying to encourage people to actually live in the city. And so, and my thought there was that people who are, this is their secondary home, um, I guess I would like to see, I guess I'm going to sort of say what I said last one. But I would like to see them try and make their reasonable accommodation for their disability using, without going beyond the bounds of our zoning, zoning laws and ordinances. Um, given that if they own two homes, they, I, I guess I expect them to have the financial needs to do so. Um, and I don't, I guess I don't see it as, as quite of a burden, um, as it might be if it was someone's primary residence.
So yeah, it's not as much of a barrier because this is supposed to keep housing from being a barrier and if it's a second home, then as much of a barrier, yeah. But there, you can't have one and both, can't have reasonable accommodations in, in the primary and the secondary. Well, this isn't like the physical A B U, this is like, you know, if you have your primary residence in the Bay Area, which, and you might have a reasonable accommodation there. And then you have a second home here, a vacation home that you, you vacation in. That's what we're talking about.
So do the tax people follow that?
Well, you get a home, uh, homeowner's exemption on property tax for your primary residence. So you only get one of the IRS or county.
Anyway, I, I mean, it is what it is, it's written, I just wanted to voice my objection, I guess, and provide that.
Um, yeah, again, and, and whatever. I mean, I appreciate that, I mean, I think, um, I guess I'd be, I'm not, I'd be curious to hear if there's any other strong opinions one way or the other from the other commissioners. Just so it's, that's just me and Aaron here.
No, I absolutely want to bog down the meeting, this is just, I don't know why this, uh, grabbed me, but it just did for some reason, yeah.
So let, let me make sure I understand, I'm getting confused with the process. Uh, there, there are two, there are two pathways to get a reasonable accommodation. One is administratively. And then the other is you bring it to the planning, planning commission. So if you bring it, and, 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 and the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this process right here is for administratively, correct? In other words, if you, if you check all these boxes, it doesn't have to come to the planning commission.
Which boxes, one through?
One through ten.
Ten.
If it's your primary residence.
Well, no, I think you need to check all those boxes either way.
Either way. Okay.
And the request is not even necessarily as written here, it's really um, not even necessarily a public hearing, it doesn't even have to be a public hearing before the planning. You could have your own deliberative process that does not allow public.
I just want to point out, item B in the review authority. I just point out, item B in the review authority.
Exactly, right. Just where I was going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So a request for reasonable accommodation, accommodation that is not for the applicant's primary residence. Shall be reviewed and determined by the planning commission.
Yes.
So I think you can get it both ways as whether it's a primary or a secondary.
Yes, but then you have to come before the planning commission. And my question is, why?
Well, then I kind of go back to what Trevor's saying. Uh, sorry, Tristan, excuse me, Tristan.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, and that is if. If a person has the wherewithal that they have the ability to have a secondary resident, then perhaps it's not. Unfeasible that they would have to come to the planning commission for approval of that. It's a little bit different, uh, with a second home or a second second, uh, residence. I bet you, okay.
I mean, I.
Yeah, I I, yeah.
It could be for a child. It could be for somebody in their, you know, I mean. It's not necessarily for the owner. If my child or my spouse has a stroke and the, I'm just.
Yes.
Those are the types of things that's popped into my head.
That's that's exactly right.
Or an inherited home where, and and I don't know that a means test is necessarily. And but I do want to say I really appreciate Trevor's point of also not placing an end run. For a property that normally would, you know, S T R something just, oh, if I say this, then I can get away with it administratively. Um, that point Trevor made about the parking stuff, and that's a very real concern, um, for me, so. But I guess that's kind of my. But it's okay. We can disagree. That's the whole point, you know?
Well, okay, so from a practical standpoint, let's say a person has two homes. I get this through my head, two homes, um. He has a reasonable accommodation on his primary residence. And he is requesting a ramp on the second home. What you're saying is that there is only one reasonable accommodation that can be. Applied. For an individual. Um. Unless he comes to the planning commission for that second ramp at his secondary home.
That's how it's written now.
Yes, I guess reasonable accommodation meaning. Like a variant, a variance, like he can still build a ramp as long as it's conforming, right? But he could have a ramp on both houses if they're, if one of them is conforming, but if he wants to. Have a variance, then it would come forth.
Is that correct?
That's right. So it would be a ramp that doesn't need setbacks, um, where, and and one of the findings is, are there alternatives? Could could you design a ramp position and so it would meet setbacks? And if so, I would deny that administratively, I think, unless there was a good recent. Oh, well, it has to reach the parking spot or, you know, something like that.
Okay, um.
I've got to move on. But we do have to, I think we have to resolve this.
Okay.
I'm waiting till reasonable, reasonable catches it.
Yeah.
I just, then it's like, okay, it's, it's fine to me if we. Somebody needs it, it's reasonable. And if somebody's getting, saying, that's not reasonable. And you shouldn't do it, then it's. Be not a problem.
So you would just send it to the. You try to make an administrative decision.
So the way it's worded now is that, um. If it's a primary residence, if it's someone's primary residence, I would make the decision, whether it's the owner or the tenant, it could be a tenant. Um, but if it was the person's secondary residence. You would make the decision. And I think that that process. So there are, I mean, there are, the planning commission can make decisions that are public hearings, so potentially. It could be not a public hearing. You don't see that very often, but I'm pretty sure, you know, you could have a hearing that you don't open to the public. So it doesn't have to, you don't have to open that can of worms for for this.
Does it like a closed session?
The public can be here, you would be in a closed session, but they wouldn't have the opportunity.
So as a matter of maybe trying to figure out how to handle this, could we put something in that would suggest that? Um. I'm looking at item B under review authority, a request for reasonable accommodation that is not for the applicant's primary residence. Shall be reviewed and determined by the planning commission and add something to the effect that. Um, and the planning commission shall, um. Do whatever is necessary to accommodate the, um, additional, um. Request for accommodate. For reasonable accommodation, excuse me. I mean, I I see both sides of this. I I, you know, it's it's clear that we're trying to. Streamline the process and eliminate barriers. There's no question about that, but at the same time, I can understand. So that, uh, you know, someone who is asking for a second, uh, reasonable accommodation. Uh, it's a little bit different situation perhaps. Due to the fact that it's another, it's another residence.
But I don't mean, I don't necessarily think you should.
I know those are weasel words.
So Trevor, um, I'm trying to see if I can get to some language. If the primary residence comes to you, there's no variance required. There's no, I mean, what? It's a setback issue in in the, and but there is an alternative, right? They want to put it here because it's the least expensive option, but they could do it and not violate any kind of our ordinances. You would administratively deny that?
Unless they could argue why it didn't work for them to. Meet the setbacks. Like I said, like it has to reach the parking space or something, I, you know. We haven't had a lot of these come up.
Again, yeah.
I don't know, um.
Cause I'm wondering if I can get to a point where if there's some. Requirement or language in here that if there's a variance or if it fits neatly within the boxes and there is no other alternative. You know, for a a secondary, you you see where I'm heading with that? I don't know if that's making it more complicated than it needs to be.
Well, I mean. Yeah, and I, you know, I was, you know, I was thinking about Richard's suggestion where, okay, well, maybe you. Give more leeway for a primary residence than a secondary residence. But really, I mean, the findings are that there aren't other alternatives. Um.
Do we have other? Not that it's apples to apples, anything else i- in our city where primary versus secondary residence is meaning, a meaningful distinction? With S T Rs, obviously. The home share, that subcategory, yes. Anything else where that?
Occupations that are to run a business from your home, it has to be your home. Yeah, so a couple of things.
So, um, I'm just reading ahead just a little bit and, um, I'm on page six. Under findings. And so i- if we were sitting here and we had to. Adjudicate a sit- situations, first one says whether the housing, which is the subject of the request. Will be occupied by the individual. It's nothing to do with primary or secondary. It's whether or not the person is occupying it. Okay, so we could click, we could check that box. Whether the requested accommodation is reasonable and necessary to make the housing available to an individual with disabilities protected in the Act. That's clearly defined elsewhere, so that's not a problem. Whether the requested accommodation would, under circumstances of a particular case, particular case materially adversely affect the health and safety, et cetera, et cetera. I think, I think we could leave it the way it is. And I mean, when you do your findings, it becomes very clear that, uh. I I don't, I don't think it really matters. Anybody see anything in here that would suggest that? Whether or not it's a primary or secondary, uh, that we couldn't make the finding. And it was kind of going back to what I was trying to say, you know, weasel words, you know, how do you, how do you make a finding? And I don't see anything here that would suggest that we couldn't do that.
No, and I I agree. I I see no reason why, if this is written, the person were to come to us, we couldn't make the findings to say yes, that. I have no problem with. My issue is just the exercise of making them come before us.
I get it. I get it.
And so to me, that doesn't, that that, I I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't. But I mean, I'm like, I'm very content to move on.
Well.
You know, I don't know if we're going to get there.
Um, I, so I've been, so as we're, I might be, I think I want to walk back my hard line on this or. Whatever you, I want to call, um. Cause I've just thought of like more scenarios about, so I'm thinking like, okay, somebody's secondary home. They want a butter ramp and it's, uh, not conforming. They come before us and. We say. No, maybe. Build it like this and it turns into like, I guess, like a larger construction project and then. Um, as I think about that, it's like, then it becomes, I guess. That would then become like more of a permanent fixture of the home, whereas the reasonable accommodation is theoretically temporary. And does not run the. And. So I guess like, when that person sells their home or whatever happens, um, it's no longer in their possession. Theoretically, that accommodation goes away. Um, which seems difficult to enforce, but, because that's another topic, um. I I guess, I, so I I want to, um. I'm I'm on board, more on board with Aaron's point of view now, having thought about it more. I guess like, cause my overall concern is that. Sort of people were just going to want to be building ramps all over the place or sort of using this. If it's their secondary home, using this reasonable accommodation areas to. I don't know, weasel something else out of, out of city that wouldn't normally be allowed, um.
I wonder. You know, one of the things I was starting to think is, well, what would be the different outcome? Um. You know, going to me versus the planning commission, um. I guess I might be more worried about saying no than planning commission as a, as a body. Um, but I think I would, you know, I would understand what the alternatives were, um. And, you know, I could talk to Ross and some other people about what's, what's reasonable. Um. But I wonder, you know, this idea of a loophole seems to be, and that's S T Rs, it could be second homes. And I wonder if maybe we need an extra finding, um, because I, I don't see that these findings would. You know, it says that it's occupied. Well, someone might occupy their S T R a few weeks of the year. And, you know, this is their loot, this is their loophole. And maybe that's where this idea of will not impose an undue financial administrative burden. Or frustrate the application of other, maybe that's what that's getting at. But maybe we want, um. Yeah. Whether the request accommodation will impede implementation of a required alteration in the program policy law. So does that impede? Implementation of it. So if someone, I'm thinking about parking, because S T Rs and parking. Um, so someone requests to reduce parking spot for an S T R and I think, well, that would kind of impede implementation of the S T R ordinance, I suppose. I could say that. Um, but we could add another finding that is. What it would be, but if there, it's not, it's not a loophole or it's not a. I don't know. Well, I guess the findings really already get it that, because it's necessary. It's necessary to make housing available to an individual.
It's tough because then that opens up the can of worms. Now are we limiting access? Accessibility to vacation in our, you know, our air. I don't know what kind of situation that, you know, coastal commission coastal act, I I don't. I mean, they get upset when they paint the curves a different color. You know, what kind of level of detail do they? I don't know, um.
They, they haven't been super immersive in housing. In the past, but with the state priorities have changed, they're being pushed to. Cause, cause really for them, housing residences was not a priority use. It's not a priority use of the coastal. They would prefer vacation.
Are they, right? The visitor services and I'm just thinking that priority through. We do something, because I was saying, well, we could put language in there excluding S T Rs. Well, that obviously I don't think we'd go for that, um. And is that necessarily the right decision? Should we be limiting access if somebody wants to make an S T R accessible?
You can get sued if it's not accessible and the bathroom isn't, you know, for.
Business is not for private residents. I just, but would we be opening ourselves up to? Liability or frustration? If we put a barrier in place to, I have an S T R and I want to make it an accessible S T R. What do you, what do you mean no?
It seems like.
I think we talked about this the last time, uh, that is that an S T R is business. So there are some, uh, to me, then, then the requirements change. For, uh, you know, ADA compliant, uh, compliant things, I believe, there should be.
They do, they do change.
Well, I have. Do they? I mean, I don't know. The S T R is not a business. It's kind of odd.
Yeah, they don't have the business license. They have the S T R license in Louisville, this is in the city. Um, and, for example, I have one down the street from me that's being turned into one and I don't think they have to bring themselves up to any kind of ADA standards.
So that's true. That's true. I I guess that's a good point, um.
Yeah, it is kind of an awkward thing, yeah.
Let let me propose this.
Now I want them all to come to the planning commission because I don't want to make these decisions.
Let let me propose this, um, uh, I I. Let me make sure I understand. There is, we do not have to get this recommendation to the city council right away.
Absolutely not, yeah.
So having said that, uh, it may be worthwhile to have a little bit further discussion on this with a little bit more time to think about it. Um, and so I would recommend or suggest that we, uh, take a look at the rest of it. There's probably some controversial things here, but then we come back next month and take a look at this again. And maybe we can, uh, with a little bit more reflection and a little bit more detail, we can figure out what what, what it really means and what we want to do. I think just think some good ideas, maybe they'll start to percolate up to the surface. We can come up with a, this, one way or the other.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds great.
Okay.
And, uh, excuse me, I I reasonable is a legal term. And whether or not the city attorney can, the city's not going to get sued for doing something. That we consider reasonable.
Well, anybody can sue the city anytime they want. It's whether they win.
Yes.
Um.
So I I think we should check to the city attorney to see if we create no problem.
Yeah, I think this is a good one, um. Ordinance in general to get some input from, from the city attorney. So in the meantime, before the next meeting. Um, I could send this current version and highlight that particular issue.
Technically, it'll probably be the February meeting because January is our joint meeting, right?
No, I thought we were having.
Oh, there's two, okay, so we still, okay.
Yeah, right.
We sell a regular, all right.
Right, is that true?
Yeah, yeah, or, uh, cause that's on the fourth, fourth Tuesday, so the city council meeting. Yes, the second city council meeting.
Okay, um. If we can skip over. Page, well.
Well, I thought on page six, the decision was. Really well, I thought that was fine.
So yes, if there's any other comments on this, um, reasonable accommodation. Get them into the record. Hearing none, seeing none. Okay. Uh, okay. So we'll bring this back next month or our next meeting, if we put it that way. Okay, uh, at this point I'll open it up for, uh, public comment. Do there any comment from, um. On this agenda item? Hearing none, seeing none, bring it back to the commission. Any further comments? Okay, good discussion. Still needs work. Okay, next item is the general plan update, community design element. Discussion decision on an updated draft of the community design element.
Twenty five pages. It's much thinner than last month. So let's see, so, uh, we are working on kind of. Integrating the design guidelines and the community design element is one of the things we talked about. So again, made the edits, um, from the last meeting. Um, there are several comments about making sure that everything's consistent. So I did incorporate things from the community design element that were not in the design standards yet. So I didn't do some things around or copy some things over. One of the things I was thinking with CD one point three is that. To integrate them even further, um, would be to actually have the. Guidelines of CD one point three follow those design standards. Um, so this is just sort of a, a very brief example of what that might look like here in italics. Um, so it goes through the same letters. And that exercise also got me thinking about maybe combining some more sections, like the ones on accessory. Uh, structures, for example. Cause I didn't have much to say about some things. So that's one thing to think about in terms of the bigger picture. Uh, signs were kind of the main one that still had some detailed guidelines. Some of those are actually, I realize more of a regulatory nature. And so I left them as policies that will direct, um, the zoning standards and the zoning ordinance. Made them into their own policies and then a few things I brought over to. The design standards, um, as well from the sign, uh, CD four point four. Uh, and then the design guidelines, uh, just incorporated. Comments from the last meeting. One of the things that came up was how to sort of try these out. Uh, and, and whether we could start using them before they're certified by the coastal commission in ten years. So. I had a couple of ideas. We could certainly do some mock hearings would be one way and we could do projects that had. Come before Trinidad or projects that from somewhere else and like flop off somewhere and trigger that. So we could do some mock hearings. Um, but I also, another idea would be to. Use these standards to kind of refine the existing guidelines. So that's the last document in the packet of, of this topic. So I took the existing design criteria. Those are. In standard print and then in italics, I copied the design standards. Under where they might fall and they didn't all crawl nicely and. A lot of them didn't really fall under one, but maybe they could all go under. I think H, because it's just. Does it fit with the character of the community basically is designed or be hiding H. So. Oh, most of the, we could probably squeeze them under there. So that's one idea is to sort of adopt those as a policy. That's sort of a. Um, refines the existing guidelines. So you're still making, you would still make your findings on a project based on. The regulatory design guidelines that are in ordinance, but you could use the standards. To help refine those.
You suggesting that for like a potential next project in front of us and I'm running in parallel?
Potentially, yeah. Um, you know, we. I mean, the planning commission has adopted some policies to help interpret things, um, you know, definition of a kitchen and a. West bar, for example, because that has come up. Deal with after the fact permit, things like that aren't really well defined in the ordinance, um, but to do an amendment is. A lot of work and so we do have some policies that help. Refine your decisions, but your findings would still have to be. Based on the regulatory. So just, so that's just a couple of ideas to think about, um, in, in terms of sort of testing. So, um, otherwise just continue reviewing like the community design element. Design standards. The community design element will go to. You know, into the general plan packet and get to. The coastal commission, um, we'll talk more about sort of the logistics and process as part of the next item. I guess if we get there, um. The design guidelines, I know that the planning commission would be interested in processing that amendment. To the zoning ordinance sooner rather than later. And so that will be. I, I actually have a meeting with those mission staff tomorrow to talk about ADUs and exemption from exclusions. We are gonna set up a regularly, like weekly meeting time. So that would be a question. You know, to their workload and whether we can get that processed sooner rather than later. I think, I mean, I think it is important. We'll decide, desire review is. Supposedly they have more staff now, so hopefully they stick around.
And they're gonna fly this Friday.
Oh, the ADUs, the, uh, the STRs is this Friday, yes.
So you'll be on.
I have another meeting. Um, I will be. Watching my phone though, in case something comes up and I actually jump on to that meeting, but Eli and Jennifer will be there. Or.
So. I'll, I'll be perfectly honest. I am totally confused. And part of it, I think is nomenclature. I, I think I, and bear with me just so I can figure this out. So we have, the first document is the design element. I got that. But then we start talking about principles. On page three, and I'm just jumping in and then we can come back and take a look at it in more detail. I'm trying to walk through this, make some sense of it. And, and so now we're talking principles, CD one.
Well, I, I don't know that. I haven't out there. I'm not sure that's.
I did see that. Yeah. So then. Then I walk over to. The ordinance, which is seventeen dot six zero, right? Design review. And yet. The ordinance contains standards and criteria. Design standards on page three. And, and so I, I get confused when we switch from standards to criteria. I'm having a hard time trying to. Figure out then, and, and all of this at the top here calls is, is, says criteria and procedures. Then I go to the design guidelines and it says it's a sample supplemental design guideline and then it says it's a design criteria. So I. I'm just real concerned about the way the nomenclature is being used. And I'm not sure what we're, but what the end. If the end document is to be the design. Criteria. And it's labeled seventeen six dash oh four oh, but it's not. Oh, four oh, that's in the. I'm sorry. It is oh four oh, excuse me. But we call it a design criteria and yet we can say that they're guidelines.
But they're samples.
Well, okay, yeah, they're samples at this point, but the idea was to merge the two. And, and it, to me, it's very confusing.
So are you, so, okay, so is it primarily the sample supplemental design guidelines that are confusing?
I understand where they come from.
Okay.
But it's the way in which they get mapped back into the, the other documents. And sometimes they show up as criteria, sometimes they show up as guidelines, sometimes they're, uh, guideline, guidelines or criteria or standards.
I think that is a good point. Maybe, you know, I think. Right now, are they? They're called criteria. Maybe criteria is a better. Word. Basically they're finding use them now as findings. You have to find that the project is consistent with these criteria. Um, so we write them as findings. And maybe standards in the new ordinance is, maybe criteria is a better word. Cause they're not really standards that have to be met. They're not a hard line stamping. I think of standard as more of a hard line kind of thing. So maybe criteria.
And, and where is that?
Would be the new section seventeen six oh, oh, four oh, which is, it would be consistent with the existing.
Okay, so, so what you've done here though is turn these into view protection findings. I mean, a design review and view protection findings, right?
In the sample one?
Yes.
So what this is, this is our existing language.
Yes.
Yeah. And so this is only, and I'm not trying to, um, I'm not trying to keep the old language. What I'm trying to do is give you a way to use the new language until we are able to officially adopt it. So the idea would be that. These are the design criteria that you are stuck with as of this moment. But we have these new ones that we've been talking about that are better. And can we incorporate that into our decision making before they're officially certified by the coastal? So it's kind of a separate, it's really sort of a separate path. Where we're going is the first two documents. This is just a potential way to use those soon. But where we're going is the first two documents.
And then it's simpler with the. The whole introduction, community design, all those sections.
The standards, yes.
Yeah, I mean, you've kind of, the, the, the words a lot are the same, you know, in this whole design element. But when you get to the. Sample design guidelines, you've kind of made it easy.
Yeah, I kind of tried to mesh the two.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, and it's simple. It's not. You know, and that's, and that's what we want. We want to understand. You know, the structures, the ball, the landscaping, the native plans that, you know. Oh, I think, I thought it was great.
Well, I hope, I hope that I'm the only one that's confused, so, uh.
Well, you know, Richard, this is the element.
No, no, I, I completely understand. I, I, I understand the three documents. But what I guess I get a little concerned with is it seems to me that we. We apply different words in different documents. To one in the same. Thing. And we call them standards, criteria.
Priorities, policies.
And, and, and it's, to me, it's very confusing and, and certainly if it's confusing to, uh, well, it's confusing to me. Oh, just say.
And Richard has brought this up for years. Because he finds the details and pinpoints them and then Trevor has to explain it. You know, that, I mean, he smells observant. Because he's been here so long, he just knows well, listens.
I like kind of center Trevor, like this is existing. And that could be spelled right across the top in big letters. And this is what we're moving towards. Down across with big letters.
But I, I, I mean, I do think that we, I, I think Richard has a point and I do think, um, the nomenclature does jump around a little bit. And I, I think we should probably settle on what it should be. And, you know, um, in, in the general plan, we're talking a little bit bigger picture. So, you know, I, I don't think principle is necessarily the right word. Because we have principles sort of defined as something even higher level, actually. But maybe in the general plan, they're guidelines. And then when they get down to the zoning ordinance, it's narrower and that's where the criteria, maybe that's criteria. I mean, criteria or standards. Like I said, I, I kind of like criteria actually because.
What, what's the, what's in the plan right now is a criteria.
Uh, in the zoning ordinance, it's criteria, yeah.
Well, then let's keep it.
That would be in the dictionary, right? Which we already. Looked at a while.
In the, in the glossary for this? We have principle defined and I'm not sure we have standard or criteria defined.
Okay, well, uh, I, okay, so again, not to get logged down in nomenclature, um, but, um.
Or a cave.
Maybe there's. Um, but, uh, again, um. If, if there's a way which we can, number one, uh, streamline or not streamline, but. Can make it consistent across the documents. I think that would help.
What I think, you know, another way. Think about it is. The zoning ordinance has to be consistent with the whole plan.
Of course, right.
Um, but you'll be using the zoning ordinance for your decision meeting. Not, not what's in the general plan.
Yes.
But what we're used to the general plan for is to write the zoning.
Right.
So, um, so that's why these are policies and I think guidelines is probably better than. Principles here. So these can be. Guidelines. What page is that? Page three of the design element. Something's weird with the wording there. I'll work on that. And then, and then I think I like criteria for design. Even set of standards.
And just so I'm following you, where's that? Where, where do you want to do that?
That would be on page three. That's the section seventeen point six oh point oh four.
Instead of standards.
Instead of standards.
Wait a minute, I mean the wrong argument.
So now we're back in the design review or no?
Yeah, now I'm in the, yeah, the ordinance, like the design. Criteria and procedures. So, yeah, that's what's called criteria. So, yes, it should be.
Design criteria.
Yes. Yeah. Following design criteria. And then I will do a search and see if they come out elsewhere too.
Great. That, that I think would help. Okay, um, we kind of, again, I apologize for getting us off track, but let's go back.
So.
Yeah, that's just one more clarifying question. So the, the sample. I just want to make sure I understand. The sample is an attempt to combine. Current on the book stuff with the stuff that hasn't been certified yet. It's kind of like, uh. You know, Cliff Notes for us as commissioners to use down the road, right? That's what that in theory would be used for in lieu of. The line item on page three, section seven, you know, oh, four oh, right?
Yeah, because that hasn't been officially adopted yet. So, but if you wanted to adopt these as policies, so. How do you determine the, uh, you know, the finding A, the alteration national land forms caused by cutting, filling, or aging shall be minimal. Structure shall be designed with the site. Structure. Well, how do you make that finding? Well, you could use these criteria one through six to help you make that.
Technically the ones in italics are not currently.
That's right.
Okay. Could it make sense to, in essence, table this kind of hybrid document? Which I think would be a really great tool for us until we finish this one and then have just. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, that is, that's good.
Cause I think once we get it, the meat done, then it's like, okay, yeah, let's have. Cause I think once we get it, the meat done, then it's like, okay, yeah, let's have it kind of open. Cause I, I really dig this tool. I think it'll be really neat for us to kind of test drive as we go forward.
And you can read it.
Yeah. I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, no, very good.
I don't know if we can do that either.
Um, the, the other thing I was also thinking, and again, just a thought. This is probably from the public's perspective, I'm thinking, from the public's perspective, probably one of the most important elements to look at. And I'm a little, not that I'm berating anybody who has participated in this process. But I'm a little concerned we have not had as much public comment as we probably need.
I'll break the game.
Well, good. Uh, I was wondering if maybe we made a little pitch to the to council, because they usually get a little bit better attendance. And we.
Put in the paper.
Well, what, what, I, whatever we decide, but I just, it seems to me that this is, this is real critical, more so than some of the other elements that we've looked at. And I would really, really like to get more public comment.
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the other elements, you know, it's kind of standards.
Yeah.
And it's, it's standard stuff, where this really is for the community. So I mean, an alternative, well, not just the city council, but we could, you know, you could do flyers, you could do the email.
Yeah, could we email everybody saying, hey, this next month, this is what we're discussing, this is.
Good point.
Email newsletter, yeah.
Good point, yeah. He posts a survey.
This is where the site is. Yeah, we're kind of working on being able to. Yes, yes, we could.
But all the other planning commissions, city councils, including our primary city council have their agendas in the time standard every week.
No, I, I, I understand that.
And then you just, you know, put it so that in request public attendance to critical public attendance needed to help move our general plan along.
No, that's, it's a good suggestion. You know, we're having a joint meeting between the STR committee, the planning commission and the city council to talk about the STRs. My mind, that would be a great thing to do for a design review. Yeah, but that's, that's just a, okay, I don't want to get, again, I apologize for getting bogged down in this.
Well, let's, um, let's plan on trying to do maybe make an announcement at the city council meeting. We'll use the email newsletter last gave to highlight the fact that this is on the agenda. Got any other ideas?
New freshman, so.
Well, that's a good way to get people. Care cake?
No, just. I'll take all the boxes, they'll put them in Andrew's office.
But, but we can start with that and try and, and, and you guys can get the word out too. Uh, and then if we don't get enough that way, then they, or, or, and we do, uh, later do the joint planning commission city.
That's great, maybe when, if you can ask, are you gonna ask Gabe, like, to kind of plain text the language a little bit, not we're just, we're discussing community design. Here's what this means to you, we're discussing the elements that are used by the planning commission to, you know, determine a project's approvals, you know, something.
He's good at that, he can.
Yeah, sure. I don't know.
It's really PSA. But the other things that you get to oh, yeah, you get the drafts on the website too.
Sure. Okay, um, any other questions or comments on staff report? Other than what we've already talked about? All mine were, what's a design standard criteria versus guidelines and stuff? Uh, okay, so as is our process for right now, we'll just start with the, the just community design element and walk our way through it. So are there any questions, comments, or corrections, or whatever on page one? Really late. Seeing none, moving to page two. Um, anything on page two?
I, I run on page one, is the nineteen seventy six last paragraph, uh, general plan. It's updated in nineteen seventy eight, certified by the Coast Commission. So when we do a new one in two thousand thirty, a lot of the, what was in seventy six will be changed?
Yes. Yes, almost everything.
Except the new.
And I'm still supposed to map all seventy five existing policies to the draft policies? And I tell them, they're all lost, I don't.
Anything else on page one? Sixty-two?
Okay, I have one on page two in background. Second paragraph. Uh, third sentence, the city has also adopted a few vegetation ordinance that establishes a maintenance process to resolve, to restore views that have been unreasonably blocked by growing vegetation. Okay, so somebody goes to wants to challenge a neighbor. Then they pay all kinds of fees to go over that.
So technically, yes, um, if someone wants their neighbor to cut vegetation and can't work out a solution directly with the neighbor, they can file an application with the city and maybe have to pay a fee. The, the ordinance does talk about distribution of fees and it's not all on the applicant, it's also partially on vegetation.
But that's fairly straightforward, right from the views, views and vegetation ordinance, correct?
Yeah, I think it recommends that, um, at least for the work, I think it recommends a fifty fifty split, but that the planning commission can defer on something else.
Well, now would, uh, go on both pieces of property, a note on both pieces of property, that this was discussed on the state and this was agreed upon. That that bushes, that is not going to be affected in twenty years.
But so, yes, um, the ordinance does recommend something like a deed restriction, um, so there will be a maintenance agreement for, for, if, if the vegetation isn't totally removed. Yeah, there's some sort of maintenance agreement, um, that is required as well.
Thank you.
Anything else on page two? And here we are talking policies on page three. And, and we've agreed that under CD one dot three, we're changing principles to guidelines, correct?
Yes, um, but I do want to bring you back to my staff report and whether we should have guidelines that follow the topics of the design criteria. And I had sort of an example of what that might look like in the.
You're talking about the uh, help me, where, where are you looking?
On page one of the staff report, in italics.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
So just to help with that, several, CD one point three A, where is that in your example of staff report? You know, I mean, you just kind of map back the example or?
These ones that are in here would go away. The ones that are currently in.
On page three, you would suggest removing and replacing something similar to.
To this, now this is just sort of bare bones, it doesn't provide a lot, but it follows the design criteria of section seventeen six oh oh four, it, it's the same topics.
So you could just have a wall that would be parallel. And then maybe more simplified structure of that section. Flush down. The criteria.
Yeah, thanks for, for taking us back to your staff report, because on page two, I didn't understand Q. Uh, it just says C or combined with N, but I don't, what, what's Q?
So, so if you go to the section seventeen six.
So that's my problem, I always have to go back to something else there. All right.
So, and, and that's where, so I just did this really quick as an example of what it might look like. I didn't try and write detailed criteria, but for example, A is regarding cultural resources. So it is respect the city's cultural heritage, and then we have more detailed criteria for that. Um, exhibit good cycling for B. I mean, and, and most of these fit really well, but then I got into some like roofs. What, do I have to say something else about roofs? And then it made me start to think combining roofs with either D or E and combining unin enclosed spaces with something else. And then there are several that are kind of accessory structures.
Okay.
And I thought maybe combining you know, instead of separate walls and fences section, that would just be pretty accessory structures. So this made me start thinking about combining more.
One point three would become in essence kind of an outline.
Yes.
Right, and then.
I, I like that idea and I like the parallelism, you will, and how that sort of, like in my mind, you know, comes down on the top of the pyramid.
I like it too, it's kind of tiny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's easier to follow if you were trying to read.
Any other questions, comments on the staff report?
I would amend CD one point three to be something more like what's in this.
I'm, well. What, what's the consensus?
I've supported that, I mean, a lot of these, you know, this, this specificity that's currently given in CD one point three is repeated
Yes.
in the design criteria. And I think we can simplify this as, to just be our guidelines as they are. And then have the more specific criteria down below.
Kind of consensus then, do we go?
Yeah, I like that concept a lot.
Okay, all right, sure.
And I, you maybe haven't thought about this enough yet, but how about combining some of those sections?
Uh, yeah, definitely that roofs, roofs, roofs can go with.
Yeah, I think that's great, I think a lot of that kind of comes from your exercise of combining the things and creating the outline, so to speak. I don't know, you know, I think.
I'd say.
That's, yeah, describing it more places actually can confuse.
Yeah, and, and the wording is a little different here and there and we'll change, you know, we can pick a one and then it doesn't get changed to another. And so, yeah, I think that's part of why. And then any of these A through J that aren't really incorporated into the criteria, I will incorporate them.
Going once, going twice, anything else on the staff report?
I just said on the app, preserve public and private views by size, both in a truth in this. Because we're doing that to instructions. So maybe it shouldn't be landscaping. Did I get them there? Well, and I'm, I'm gonna bring it up later on too. Um, F, preserve public and private views by size, both in inclusiveness of vegetation.
And you could just make it Diane Orness.
I'll be here. I can't, and we had Cheryl said before she left that we were going to do the city council and the planning commission tour, remember, of the city? And I was gonna point out the trees, I'm still ready.
Well, we still have a, as a future agenda item for vegetation or regulations, yes.
Yeah, my real chair. So you're still around to attend meetings, Diane?
Okay. All right, uh, ready to move on to the element itself?
I don't know, page four, you know what?
No. I think so.
Going backwards, all right.
Um, well, we had a couple, you had a couple of comments on the background on page one and two, and I think we have those resolved, right? Okay, moving on to I, uh, page three. And we talked about principles is now guidelines.
And where, where was that?
Uh, page three of the ordinance.
Oh, up here.
Of the element, excuse me, of the element.
And I'm gonna replace A through J with with what?
Oh, the front, what's in the stack, yeah.
Correct, and then ensure that the detail of A through J somehow.
Makes it into the criteria.
Okay. Right. Um, if, I, I have just like a couple of minor comments on A through J, is that helpful for you right now? Should, is it better to wait until she's back or?
Yeah, and I know there was a comment about J.
Right.
Um, I just want to clarify that and I think it, it is in the design criteria as well, so maybe that's.
Yeah, I mean, I brought, I think I brought that up as it being repetitive, but I mean, I think we want to emphasize that, so.
Okay. Anything else on page three?
Again, just specifically under A, um, is it, does it make more sense, instead of surrounding the building, surrounding the development? Is that more inclusive? I, I don't know.
True.
And then C, I just had a question for the commission about limiting it to nearby roofs versus consistent with roof lines within the city as a whole. I don't know, you know, do we want to have, if you're not close to the bluff, can you have this type of roof line? If you're, I don't know, is that gonna change the character of town?
What, what letter?
C, where it's in red, they're nearby roofs compatible, roof lines are compatible with other nearby roofs, larger building. I didn't, I wanted it compatible with other nearby roofs and are consistent with roof lines within the city or just reference the city as a whole. Cause I feel like the roof lines within the city are fairly uniform.
I think we had, we talked about this at the last time. And well, some people have flat roofs and some people have pitched roofs. Right? I mean, I guess, and, you know, one side of the street, they're, right, or.
I guess my specific example is the Vanderpool project, right? The concern there was a dramatically effective views and light possessions. Would that be okay, would we be okay with that being elsewhere in the city?
Across the street.
Uh, I, it was just, I, I don't know, that's why I kind of thought of that, but you know, it's something to, yeah, about ponder.
Yes, it, it does impact the town character.
I think I remember some comments that, you know, if, on scenic drive, I mean, fine.
Yeah.
In fact, I think this originally said that compatible with the.
Neighborhood.
No, no, um.
Long street.
Yeah, and along the streets.
There was something about, uh, we, we opened it up a little bit because we didn't want just the neighbor, the, you know, the next door neighbor to worry about the roof. So that's why we said nearby roofs, maybe that's still not the right.
I don't know, is that still a little too narrow?
Well, you cross down along the street. And along the street.
Yeah, I think we, well, we tried to change it to nearby because there was the thought of, what about a roof that's not on the same street, but, you know. Yeah, I think we well, we tried to change it to nearby because there was the thought of what about a roof that's not on the same street, but you know. Next block over, we wanted to be more vague sort of purpose, I guess.
What about, um, you know, in this part of town, there aren't very many second stories? Is that going to, you know, so if your neighbors are all on story, does this mean you can't have a second story?
Uh, I don't think it means that. It just has to be compatible.
Just yeah, something a bit of a.
But it does raise a bigger interesting question that there is different character throughout the city. You know, kind of the traditional right here city versus, you know, and what's appropriate here might be inappropriate.
Well, I think that's why we were trying to say, or why we use the word nearby. Because at one time we tried to define neighborhoods.
Right.
And we didn't get very far with that.
Wouldn't think.
But, uh, I mean, but but you 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 could, I mean, the 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 architecture in the neighborhood on scenic, sorry, yeah, scenic. For an example versus ocean, it's totally different.
For sure.
So, um. What's the pleasure of the commission nearby, something else?
I like nearby.
Yeah, fine, we can leave it there for now. They can circle back if absolutely necessary. Anything else on page three? Page four. I'll I'll bring it up again and and I may, and I I honestly don't remember the explanation that you gave us, but under CD two dot four. Uh, retain unobstructed coastal views from Edwards and Van Wick. And, um, I, uh. Thought about Wagner. But then also I was thinking about, and I I'm drawing a blank on, um, what is the street that Chiwi's house is on? What's the name of that street?
Pacific.
Pacific.
He his is on Ewing, but the Pacific is.
Down below.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking about too. And so there are other places in town other than just Edwards and and. Uh, Edwards and Van Wick.
And Wagner.
I guess the question would be to, are there really actually unobstructed coastal views as you walk down Wagner? If you walk down the trail.
Trail, yeah.
Right, but from the street itself versus Edwards and Van Wick. I feel like are kind of a little different. Is that why we have that in there, if that makes sense? I mean, you know, Wagner, they're obstructed by buildings. I can't see. There are, there aren't unobstructed views from the roadway there from the trail.
Why? I mean, why not?
But from the trails. If you're normal.
Oh, and trails, yeah.
I mean, you could expand. I mean, why is it Edwards? Well, okay, I know why it is. This is actually similar to an existing general. This one actually, this is similar to an existing general. It has.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was your. Your retort to us, but, um, I I just started thinking about other places in town where.
Yeah.
Um.
I think part of the idea was that those, those are publicly, well, no, they weren't even publicly owned when when.
But the trails.
Yeah, but I don't see why it's Edwards and Van Wick. And not, yeah, the wagon road trail.
And there is a trail right there on Ewing.
Yeah, and State Park Trail, yeah.
Yeah.
But you can't see it because the vegetation is so. But well, it could say retain unobstructed coastal views from streets and trails to the extent possible.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, that that is, uh, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that's gonna be the biggest change in thirty years in this town. Because everybody's, you know, it's in and blocks all the views, so it's just a big wall and we're going down all the streets. So if we can avoid that, that's okay.
Vegetation maintenance.
The vegetation and guy.
I'm gonna be hired. I'm gonna nail the job.
Anything else on page four?
Yes, okay, so CD two point five point one. So that's where you start to talk about the vegetation management plan. So. Instead, vegetation maintenance shall be consistent with protections for slope. Ability. Yeah. And cultural resources. And residential use.
Well, I think that's, so that is a program under CD two point five and two point five is. Landscaping and vegetation shall be maintained such that it does not cause unreasonable view obstruction. And then, okay, CD two point five point one is also will be kind of consistent with slope stability.
And then CD two point six, preserve and enhance new corridors by undergrounding or screening new. Or relocated electrical and communication distribution lines. For underground utility service connection. For your development where feasible. So we've batted this around for years, you know, it's too much money. To make people go underground and, you know, they did the cable. Lines out here. You know, on, uh. Main street out there, but not.
You are. But it's for new development. So generally for new to it, like a new house will require to underground from the pole, for example. Okay, so it's not really still, so that if if the city does ever come through in underground, it's.
My only comment with with the CD two dot six is that it says where feasible, and I thought somewhere else we said that it was a requirement.
Well. In the design standard, it's. Where feasible, and you said make them consistent, so I put the where feasible in this one. Because it's expensive.
It the city, we try.
Well, we're we're talking two different things. Uh, the public utilities, yes, that's very expensive and, um. I vaguely remember that there was a program where we were actually banking credit with PG and E, and when we finally built up to some. Tens of thousands of dollars, then they did a lot of undergrounding. But I think what we're talking about here is Trevor pointed out, new development, this is where. Potentially someone needs to bring a line in from the street to their house or to the development, put it that way, and it's got to be underground, where feasible. I just think that it's too bad that we. Have to say that, but. Because cost will always be a factor.
I mean, yeah, um, and that. We're having, so that's a current, um.
If, if we remove that and then. Somebody felt that for their project, it wasn't feasible, they could come before us and say, hey, we can't do it because of this. Okay, and then we can use my barriers, right?
Yeah, let's, where is that coming?
That we can give them now.
Oh, uh, okay, okay, it's a should. So the current criteria is, and that's a design community finding. New development should include, should include underground utility service connections. When above ground facilities are the only alternative, which are the least visible route, well designed, simple and non-detriving. There's, there's, so you're ready to present. Your, um, it's on page two of the sample supplement, which we're not supposed to be talking about, but, um, so I'm just reading the existing criteria.
No, it's true. Good.
So it's currently sort of a should, it's not.
Um, anything else on page four? It's either. Uh, your note here is should this be under signs or views? It overlaps with one dot G, sorry, one dot three G. And I have to go back. We resolve that?
Well, I guess I ended up missing that to use.
Yeah. Oh, you took it out and then, okay, all right.
I should take out the comment, but I I might have just done that on my own without the planning commission. So I still wanted to make sure.
I feel like people have seemed to have a lot of pains about signs, just with the one example that we, so I think it's important to maybe state it again.
Emphasize it. Okay.
I think there's a lot of opportunity for. In town either.
In both places.
Where's the new other place? Can you help me?
It's not under repotations.
Well, it's it's, um.
Maybe I took it out because it was repetitive and was forced with some of what was in four point four.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my comment was I didn't see how this, um. Related to. G is my point. One dot three G.
Well, one, one dot three, the G probably got amended. Yeah, so now it it does not.
Yeah, signs are important, and 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 the more. Definition, criteria, standards, the better off we are. Uh, I just, I guess my comment was it it didn't relate in my mind to G.
No.
Okay, that's that's what my question was, yeah. Um. Anything else on four? Uh, excuse me, five? Okay, moving on to six? Um. You asked a question here, our comment TP seven. Should we include anything about temporary signs, that is, flags and sandwich boards? And, um, my comment was, yes, absolutely, we should talk about them and include banners. Because we had, you know, I'm I'm going back to the the proposal, what actually the the. Request for putting up banners on the light poles. And.
We did design review.
And we, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Excuse me, so.
And we said.
We said yes.
Yeah, like a crab event stuff that.
I guess my my thought is that, yes, we need to include.
Okay.
All of those.
So do they get permits for the signs?
Um. We approved it. I don't think it required a permit.
Yeah, I don't think it was a permit. It was a sign review.
Right.
That we could for it.
Right.
There are some provisions for temporary signs, but like fifteen days and then a calendar year or something, I think.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I. The the flags that people put up have come up, the, yeah, sandwich boards, the signs on car on vehicles, um, that's probably really not allowed technically. Um, yeah, I think what we get to address, address those, and and that's really more of a rate regulatory. Issue, so that will be a, a, you know, there is only ignorance about what kind of temporary signs, um. But to have a policy that sets that, you know, guides that was thought was good. Or just, you know, limit, limit the number of those kind of things or. You know, keep it for community events or. That.
What about a business that puts them out in front during their operating period?
That's a good question.
I mean, we have some that do that, right?
They do.
Do they do that kind of stuff?
And I think that under the current rules, that's probably not allowed.
They've been up forever.
Do you guys want to allow? Those kind of.
Well, I think we need to see. Some examples of how we can. Regulate them. Definitely.
But I'll put a policy in here that they should be reading.
Yeah. Anything else on page six?
I just had a question about CD five point two. Um, I feel like I remember us having some kind of discussion about including. A line that gets it, um. Minimizing light pollution from interior lighting as well. To create a light box, that kind of stuff, and I didn't feel like that was captured here.
Yeah, I wondered about putting that, um, like CD five point one, I think what we did in the standard or criteria now is we just took out the word exterior. I think that's probably what we did.
Sounds familiar, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we should do the same thing with. Yeah, all lighting invisible from outside should be minimized. And I think, you know, night lighting could apply to either. Oh, but all lighting, yeah, it can be just all lighting we can take out next year.
Anything else on six? Looking on to seven?
Let's see, um, six point one. Um. New development shall be required to utilize data and draw tolerant landscaping with drip irrigation or other water conserving. Irrigation system, so. Who checks this?
Ross? That is a good question, and that's maybe a little bit on the regulatory. Language, might look at that, oh, that's a good question, uh, and we don't have a good system for that, but there is a state law in place. That if you are putting in. Five hundred square feet or more of new landscaping or rehabilitating twenty five hundred square feet or more of landscaping, you have to follow the state. Water efficient landscape board. So I am, I'm starting to work on one for Trinidad. That's a little bit simplified. I think the state ordinance is longer than the city's entire zone ordinance. Um. It's it's very complicated and it requires a full water budget and soil testing. I mean, it's, it's onerous. Uh, but there are people in Trinidad who use crazy amounts of water on their landscaping that probably should not be in a coastal sandy environment. Um. So, but we don't have a good system in place to. Permit or track that, um, so it is a currently, I'd say it's a gap.
So that was, that's your W E L O.
Yes.
Future, okay, all right. Um, any anything else on seven?
Just six point three, CD six point three, um. Just that we probably need a mechanism to track and enforce that so that if somebody has a plant when they first opened up their business and then. You know, I mean, I've seen landscaping going in at some of the businesses in town and. I don't know.
Yeah, and I would say we don't have a system in place now to track that, um, but I'll be.
Can't afford you, Diane.
Okay, John.
No, not Ramones, uh-uh. Hey, just an observation that's, it's there, um, but the mechanism to enforce it or.
Yeah, that would be more.
Tracking would be the first step and then.
That would be something we would include in the zoning ordinance, um, so that's a little bit more regulatory, um, than what.
And it's not a whole lot of places in town either, it's just finding the time, right?
Well, the ambassadors are coming, you know, you're about that. Let's see what happens.
Okay.
Uh, that that does, um, that's a good point, um, you know, and and this this says that, um. Require landscaping and replace unhealthy or dead landscaping consistent with what was required as part of the development permit. So if they decided that they wanted to change their landscaping completely, they have to come back for a new design review, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean. Has the city ever required landscape? I mean, we talked about we're going to in the general plan. Yeah, I mean, most cities do, um, you know, like the parking lot has to have a certain percentage of landscaping at a tree for every how many spaces. So most places do have landscaping requirements, um. Trinidad doesn't really accept it, talks about screening. Maybe in the park, there might be something in the parking section about potential.
I was thinking of the monument sign at the uh, uh, Standard Station. Um, and you know, they tore out all of the existing landscaping. I I don't know, I shouldn't say tore out.
No, they they made.
They they cut it back, but there there. Uh, there was a a plan when we approved that. Monument sign. I think it included landscaping.
Yeah, I can look at that, I can look at that, um.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Now that, though, they have to maintain that because their sign has to be really. It is. It is, there's no landscape. They have to welcome some a couple of plans. Yeah, now I will look at Chevron as an example.
Chevron, but I say standard. Okay.
I knew what you meant. I liked Chevron.
I was with you.
Okay, uh, anything else on page seven? Page eight. Okay, I don't, yes, so, um.
Just, I'm sorry, oh, this is a brief question on page eight. I feel like elsewhere we brought, um. The Turai site and other things like that to the front. Of sections of documents to highlight the importance, so I don't know if we wanted to be consistent with that and do that here as well.
And you want to make that seven point one, or do you want that more towards the really the whole beginning? I mean.
I feel like we it was done that, right? We have.
Now, under CD one point three, it will be A.
Yeah, it's already up there. It's the first one. Any also page eight?
Redundant to have it then, or do we need to keep it as a CD seven?
That's, yeah, is that exactly what's in the station? Yeah, it's. Yeah, probably it does not need to be in the criteria and.
So maybe we're so removing it from CD seven?
Yes, I worry you move into it's already in the design criteria.
One dot three A.
And one point three A.
Okay, um. I just wanted to make, okay, yeah, so we're still part of the same agenda item. All right, um. Move through the design review. And. Okay. So we'll plow right through this. Uh, this is chapter seventeen. Point six zero, design review. Any comments, questions on page one?
By A. To improve and augment the regulations now included in ordinance, it's related to. Planning, building. Landscaping and help in order to promote development, which is in the best interest to the public health, safety and welfare city. So I want to add landscape. I could add grading to who's grading after, um, planning and building.
Okay. Acceptable then, okay.
And regarding your comments, Trevor TP one, I I feel like that. One item isn't really necessary, I mean. This applies everywhere already, right?
Yeah, it's just it's in the existing chapter. I think that's maybe a question for the attorney.
Okay.
Needs to be in there. Somebody's notes, like. You know, just for ourselves and that like this one about. Those section references because they don't exist, so I'm gonna leave that one into the public review one, so the public knows.
Are you talking about TP two?
Three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and then under TP two, I didn't know. Is there a way to reference where this list will be so that we don't have to continually update here and there and back and forth and make it kind of more evergreen? It's like which? All the exterior alternatives construction as described in blah, blah, blah.
Not necessarily. Because I think design review is pretty specific as to what you want to review for design reviews, it's not necessarily every permit or. Permits that are applicable, you know, it's not going to be all across the world, it's not going to be, so it's it 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 might be its own list. But it's something to think about for the future.
Or designated by an asterisk, guys found on this, just, I don't know, you're keeping one list in one location.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, page two. No problem with story polls, right?
I can bring that in there, no, I think that's important to have it in there, thank you.
Uh, I guess my understanding when we talk about story polls is that. We would only request story polls should we think that it was going to be. Affecting views or something like that, but this is sort of written that anything that came for a designer view would have to have story polls.
Yeah, I think so that that's what I recall because that's what I've done. Previously, as I've sort of been like, well, this could affect you, so you should put up story polls. But there's going to be a couple of projects with planning permission was like, no, we just want story.
Like it.
But and then there is a, there is the.
There is an exception, yeah, yeah.
Uh, paragraph G, right? So, I mean, we've got it covered there, I think.
And it's. Put aside whole per elevation. It's really ex, you know, exterior changes. So in the administrative design review approval, is that you? Yes. It's not G, it's not Antoni, it's not Ross, it's not Ryan, it's you. At this point, it's. That's not. And that's still up, that affirmation can change. But yes, there's usually a, most cities have a zoning administrator, planning director.
Um, so a couple of comments, uh, one is on TP five, um, you you make a. Statement here that this this would be on, this would be Sunday, the week before the hearing. And yeah, as we are certain, as we are configured right now, but, um, that could change in the future if, uh, you know, people's schedules change. So, um, if the meeting was on a different day, then it wouldn't be Sunday, it could be a different day.
True, I just, I was just putting that in there for context. It's ten, is ten days the right number?
Oh, I see.
I I send out notices, um. Two weeks in advance. So maybe it should be closer with a two week notice. I, that was just really my my comment is it's ten days for.
And then the other comments, TP six and seven, um. I I kind of think that, uh, with with respect to TP six, my opinion is that it doesn't have to be submitted for approval. Uh, oftentimes, we can tell. From plans and from photos if it's representative. I don't know that we need to have a, um. A plan submitted for approval, that just seems to be a little more extraneous than it needs to be.
It does, um, I I saw some places that required that, but I'm, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Yes, and then on TP seven, the idea or the the issue of installation by certified by a licensed professional. Uh, same same comment, I think that's. My opinion, a little overkill, but I do like the idea that, uh. There is some sort of guarantee from the applicant or representative that they are. Representative of the new design.
So that affidavit option.
Yeah, that that's I I that's where I want to be.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I I sound Richard there. Especially the licensed professional installation, I mean, who holds such a licensure anyways, but.
Uh, it's.
Niche markets.
New business out.
But I I feel like, I mean, thinking of the story polls at the Van Puls house. I mean, yeah, they weren't perfect, but I think we all got. There and they did it themselves, that, you know, that's great.
I don't know, I I agree totally with these comments. I think it might be helpful if we can find, maybe it's somebody else's ordinance, an example. Schematic of what we would like a story poll to look like, so that way if I am doing it by myself. Uh, then, hey, this is kind of, we want it to look like this, um, because I think I, some of the orders I looked at have those, and I think it would be helpful, like, hey, if it does this. Then.
Yeah. It's good to have some guidelines.
So you don't think we cover that on C?
I don't, um.
It's not available, no.
I I guess we might, I guess my. On on that is during the most recent, the one I've seen story polls come before me, um. It was not clear, it required some clarification, what is that showing the final footprint, you know, kind of some of the stuff, is it the roof line, is it? Because there was the overhang, and so I think if we show that we wanted to see the maximum overhang, you know.
Okay, good point, yeah.
Um, that makes sense.
Yeah.
There were several story polls put up. Yeah.
Yeah, I just had it, that was the only example I've.
Yeah, I understand, one for the fans and. One on Underwood. It's doing the kitchen and I don't know what, I don't know what else they're doing below, it's. Lot different than what. Gil brought wine, um, S P R. Across from J three. They had a story.
Well, that was just, I think, for the projection of the kitchen.
Yeah.
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 Otherwise, everything else I think was interior on that.
Yeah, go go down to the bottom of the hill, look up.
Yeah, they can just sit the high points and that handles, you know, go across. Um, I mean, the lighthouse was a prime example, not having a steering point, story pole. Nobody knew what was happening. Other people are going to the beach every day, didn't know what was happening.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good way to.
Um, I I just had a a kind of a question, um, under the new section seventeen six zero dot oh three oh. And then. The next section is the same number.
Oh, okay.
Um, and that's kind of re. I think that is true. No, that's the only place, I guess.
But I have two section ones to you right now.
So.
Are we on page two, Richard?
Uh, page two, yes.
And fix the number.
Um, anything else, or the page three, page three. Page. Four.
I apologize, page three, uh. Hey, one, just a question, um. Do we need to have something that covers modifications to existing parcels, or is that, can, would that be considered new development?
That is.
Okay.
Okay, uh, page four. Page five.
I think, just going back to that, I could take out name, development shall.
Just development, yeah.
That's not to be me.
Right.
You're on page four, we crossed it out.
Three. Three.
We crossed out.
But we just moved it over to, uh, the top. Uh, five, anything on five? And obviously, the big question there will be consultation with the postal commission on private use.
Don't be the main person. Not gonna let you in that. What? We're not gonna let you in that. Yeah, I'm looking at goodies. I'm with a boom.
Page six.
And they're putting traffic in your car.
Great, just had a question under G one B. Um. Running privacy, and maybe this is captured elsewhere, but rooftop decks or structural projections, lookouts and similar. Kind of capturing anything other, you know, because a deck can affect privacy, but so could something else. Again, thinking of a gross, that's kind of.
Which which letter?
G one B.
Okay.
Anything else on six? It's seven.
Question about L four, um, I don't know why neon and digital. Jumped out at me in this new language. Is that, I I mean.
Uh, because I, let's see, well, I copied that from.
I guess kind of, do we need to spell that out, that they're acceptable?
Well, the neon and digital signs with distinctive designs or that provide important public information are acceptable.
Right.
Yeah, I took that from C D four point four. That's where it was.
Do we add that because of the side of the school? That's brings it back.
Yeah, well.
Added that in that those are eligible.
Digital signs, I thought we.
Yeah, I have that same thought.
I thought we said no. You know, no digital.
Right, that's.
Uh, okay.
But then I think about an open sign in a business. You know, those types of things that we already have in businesses in town.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, they were here. That might, I wonder, is that even in the existing criteria, might even be in the existing. Although I I think some, there's something about neon signs, I think in the existing general plans, probably where it comes from, and maybe because when this was written in the seventies, neon was the big, big thing, like digital isn't. So, so that's.
And I mean, there's a workaround, if we say no to neon, there's now LED scripts that look just like neon, I have on my front window.
Yeah.
I have one, I have one now.
The bear sign in the front window?
No, it's the, you know, the Grinch thing in the ornament.
Oh, oh, for the bear sign.
No.
Just kidding, I don't see her.
Do we have a residual?
No, it just jumped out at me for some reason.
Why don't we just eliminate the second part? And just ensure that lighted signs are designed to minimize glare and. When they show the necessary, make the sign.
Yep, but.
Uh, I know I'm off subject, but did we ever get the operating manual for the school sign? And also, by the way, they've been using multiple colors.
And the tree's not.
Okay, so there you go.
And I thought they were going to come back in.
Did we prohibit multiple colors?
Yes.
But it's not flashing.
No, it's it's not, uh, and and it's a various, it's.
Informal. When I was supposed to come back to you in six months and sort of review.
We definitely.
It's passed.
That popped in my head, excuse me, that's fine.
Okay.
I know.
Um, anything else on page seven? Page eight. Page nine. Um, I, uh, under uh, review procedure, uh, about two thirds of the way down, where view consideration are involved, the applicant is encouraged to contact property owners within one hundred feet. And that could, and that could be affected and show them the layout. I think one hundred feet is way too small. I think it should be more like three hundred. Two hundred. I I just think one hundred is is a little. Not enough.
I have that whole thing going myself. Taking you again.
Who do you send notices to?
Yeah, right now it is. It's only a hundred feet, but it's a hundred feet from the edge of the properties and of the building, but that's often just one, one or two properties deep.
Okay.
And and I do get a little concerned with, uh, for example, on out band wick, when you are doing something on band wick, and a hundred feet only puts about halfway up into the properties on Edwards. So, you know, and and everyone up there is affected. And I'm using it just as a raw example, but there's other places that are probably even more. I just, I think one hundred feet is just too short.
I agree.
I mean, I think it's fine to bump it up. It's where it's just encouraged. So we want to put three hundred feet there.
Did we have discussion on encourage versus shall? Can't remember.
Should and shall.
Right now they're encouraged, but where there's new considerations, they shall. Or.
It's encouraged.
Can I remember? Did we have discussion about that? I feel like we did, but I can't remember for the life.
I think we did. I maybe we decided.
So what's the word of this?
Or it should.
Well, maybe that's why we left it at a hundred, too.
I mean, I think the thing with showers, then there's, you have to sort of like prove that, right?
Yeah.
Your application, then your neighbors have to sign.
Arguments. And what if you don't get along with, yeah.
I think it's still getting noticed anyway, but it's.
Walking right in neighborly, of course.
Yeah.
So two hundred, three hundred?
Well, three hundred for um, planning commission, if there's something.
Very, very financial.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah, complex.
So we should just stay three hundred.
Sure.
Um. Encourage to look uh, uh, within uh, well, about three hundred. That makes sense. Yeah, yeah. I mean, uh, it's not a shall, but I think it sends that it's makes sense to talk to your neighbors. And I agree, we want to be neighborly.
And then is it city hall and the applicant will notice the neighbors?
Um, no, it's, uh.
Just the neighbor. Because normally they just in the in the community, they're they won't city hall. So this is encouraging the neighbors before they even submit an application.
In terms of the official medicine, we do it as a city. Uh.
Which is on that.
It's only a hundred feet for designer view and customer loan grants. Which we can up that when we do the.
And I'm just wondering why wouldn't we want them to match?
Well, that's that's exactly what I mean, I think we should.
Yeah.
And um, and what Trevor's saying, that when we get to that point, we should change that, too. Yeah.
And and I think it's written right now that the applicant will provide the stamped envelopes with everybody at the office. But they always just come to the city that ask for everybody's address. So we just skip the middle man. See that? Um, the weird thing in Trinidad, and that's another is kind of an aside, another conversation kind of with the coastal commission is coastal act requires notification of occupants as well as property owners. But how with without street addresses, I mean, without street delivery. In most places, you just do occupant at the address, and we don't have that option. So how do we, are people really required to go knock on people's? I don't think that's I don't think that's reasonable to require people to go door to door with notices. Um, we notify people when we have their P O box and water bills. But yeah, we don't do that one. And that's, that'll be, that'll be a conversation because that it's in the coastal regulations. I don't know how we're gonna.
Well, story polls will help because they'll see it, right?
And everybody will see it. And 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 notices are supposed to be posted on site, too. Yeah.
Do we, do these notices get posted at the post office, too, outside the door?
Yes, so we, yeah, so we do town hall, the post office, and Murphy's. In their crowd. Murphy's and the post office. Notice.
Anything else on page, uh, not. Okay, um, we are still working on the second agenda item, and this leads us or brings us to the guidelines, the draft guidelines.
And we're gonna ignore this for now.
Yeah, and that's just what I was going to say. So we're ignoring that. So that is the end of this agenda item. And I'll open it up for public comment. So anyone has any comments from the public on this agenda item?
You're non-scene none.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I do have a couple of quick comments, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, the first one was with regard to the story polls and the proposed timeline. Uh, it did seem, based on our recent experience, that that timeline was pretty short. So I think I was Bobby for something longer than ten, I'm sorry, longer than ten days uh, before the the meeting would seem appropriate to me. It also seems a little bit strange to me that they're required to stay up for fifteen days following the meeting, um, which is, of course, more time following the meeting than before the meeting. Um, I also just wanted to mention uh, on those draft uh, review guidelines. Um, on page six. I'm trying to scroll through and find it H two. Oh geez, I'm not gonna be able to find it in time. Um, I just wanted to mention that, uh, I guess I was curious whether solar panels, which are placed on roofs, are considered to be roof treatments? Yeah, because they are, of course, reflective, uh, to a significant extent. And if so, is that compatible with C D seven point two? I've got some additional thoughts about lighting, but nothing particularly time sensitive. So I'll uh, shut up for a moment.
Thank you, Chris. Oh, yeah, good, good comments about story polls and um, I think I captured the solar panel issue. And we're gonna look at.
The C, I remember the design.
I said C seven. This is the design review, page six.
Yeah, this is on your page six, H, H two, uh, brightly colored and reflective roof treatments should be avoided where they can cause glare and or detract from the natural surroundings. And I would just say that solar panels, by their very nature, do uh, cause some amount of glare, which might be incompatible with C D seven point two.
Do we have much input, Trevor, in the state of California with restrictions on solar panels?
No. Um, yeah, there is a solar rights act in California. They can't we can't make solar panels unduly burdensome is kind of how that's written. Um. So, yeah, maybe we should mention. Getting solar. Take point.
Okay. Any other public comment? But you're sticking with us, Chris. Okay, uh, moving on to moving on to agenda items, uh, three, um, two thousand twenty-three planning priorities, discussion of upcoming projects and priorities for twenty twenty-three. And.
I'm gonna just.
We taking a two-minute break? Yes, we are. Okay.
I'm not gonna be here in forty-five.
This is.
All right, so we we still have a call, I guess we can still move on.
Carry on.
Okay. Um, Trevor?
Yeah, so I just, this came from, um, the the council's interested in keeping the general plan moving along. So, um, this started with a conversation with with Cheryl and also Richard, um, about how how to keep that process moving. And, um, as I mentioned in here, there's not a whole lot left I can do on the general plan. It's gonna, it's waiting, it's gonna be waiting for for things outside of my control um, and and other city controls, uh, grant projects, coastal commission, things like that. But it also got me thinking about, well, we have got a lot going on. Um, there's, there's a lot of priorities. Um, so, and I I did something like this a couple of years ago. It's sort of helpful to to, um, for everybody to keep in mind and um, think about. And as as we are going through here, I realized I even left one off. We have another um, we have a reef grant we're about to, um, get the agreement for. So reef is weak, but regional, so local. Um, and so it's through H Pro, County Association of Governments and, um, but that goes through twenty twenty-four. So we have a little bit. I I do need to add this list. So, yeah, I just, um, so in terms of uh, deadlines, um, the S B two and the LEAP task have the shortest timeframes. Um, we have to finish those by August of next year. Um, you know, I think that we can meet the grant requirements, whether we're necessarily gonna get through the entire tasks in that time, particularly with coastal commission. Um, delays, um, S B two, there's plenty of funding, um, reef or leap, um, we might run out of some of the funding for some of these. Um, but so, yeah, so I just listed, uh, with S B two, um, currently working on the parking study, uh, done with the accounts. And so I'm starting to put the data and some figures together in the report, uh, A D U ordinance, which I just comments. Coastal commission, I'm meeting with them tomorrow. A D U ordinance, and along with that, also the exceptions. Exemptions and exceptions, because the that really goes with the A D U ordinance because of the septic, so septic upgrades. So to be able to do an administrative or ministerial permit for A D U, you have to be able to do the septic upgrades as well. They're related. Uh, residential design standards is is the exemptions and exclusions at this point. A LEAP grant task, we're done, planning commission's done, the zoning ordinance update, we're working on reasonable accommodation, housing outreach, um, Jennifer's hoping to get some sometime soon to help me with that, um, and then water conservation. So that's, um, incorporating the state, uh, water efficient landscaping ordinance, as well as kind of looking at tracking water use over time because change in the intensity of use of water is developed under the coastal act. Incorporating water use into our permit reviews, um, I think, and moving in the direction of, um, every water customer having some sort of contract with the city. Well, you know, a lot of places you do have some sort of agreement, but in Trinidad, it predates so much of that and and that it might have sort of a reasonable range of use. And if you go beyond that, get things to sort of divide, define that.
Yeah, other cities are fine.
Yeah, um, so kind of keeps since since the city has a limited amount of water and it should be spread around there. Um, and then we've got the O P C grant. We're working on the first meeting. If there, they've got the website updated for that. If anybody's interested, it was actually a really great meeting last Monday.
Was it here or was it Zoom?
It was Zoom.
Okay.
Um, so how many people? There's seventeen that were not city or not, you know, involved as part of the grant team, um, but a lot of great comments. And, you know, nice range of comments.
It was something you just publicized earlier or noticed earlier. I mean, I gotta I didn't realize, I am trying to almost the video.
We're, we're looking at some additional ways to advertise for the next meeting, and there is gonna be a survey online. If you wanna, you can, I think they'll put the video up so you can watch the presentation and then answer a survey if you want. Um, and then that'll go into the safety element of the general plan. Uh, development applications, obviously, we have to process those, um, as they come in. And there's a couple of other grants, water and transportation grants, G H D's working on. I have a. You know, and so that, then just miscellaneous planning. So those are kind of the first, zero is my first priority at this point. Um, and then the second tier priority is the general plan update. We get it. We're just talking twenty twenty-three isn't necessarily the priority, other than the safety element, O P C, um, and responding to coastal commission comments. There's not a whole lot else we can do on it at the moment. Um.
Are they really open to the coastal commission meeting once a month?
Yes, they're doing that with the city of Eureka, because we have a grant from them and they've been, I mean, they've been.
For everyone to see before us.
So we do have that L C P update grant. We'll kind of bring all this stuff together. Uh, we are getting a little E T S program implemented citywide in twenty twenty-three. That's kind of exciting. That's the other. Um, and then the L C P update grants are gonna do another round of sending out notices regarding the cultural elements, uh, try and do that this week. And then the design guidelines, seeing if we can get these guidelines through the coastal commission is another on our list, the second tier priority of this. So basically just a list of projects. I kind of tiered on first and second tier, basically, I'm like those guidelines and if you have any comment. Otherwise, this is what our next year's gonna look like. There's a lot going on.
There is.
And I'll just keep this on my low to make sure.
I know you should.
Uh, any, any comments?
It's a good.
You did this last year, too.
It was actually two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, because I still have.
And there's a few things still on this.
So, uh, just, just by way of background, uh, this, the the genesis of this was, um, um, Joe Kelly, who is now Mayor Kelly. Um.
Mayor, yeah.
Yes. Um, asked the question, and I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, I don't think, but asked the question when we were going to be done with the general plan update. And Trevor gave her a a number.
Which was end of twenty twenty-five.
End of twenty twenty-five.
Although actually I looked at the timeline and the general plan task, I think, is supposed to be done at the end of twenty twenty-four. And then twenty twenty-five is.
So when we picked her up off the ground, um, she was, um, very animated about trying to give us the right resources and and the right priorities to try to get it done. And I think this goes to, um, demonstrating that it's not a clear path. And and so that was, uh, discussed briefly last night, as, you know, we talked about this, or somebody did. And and in any event, the point being, I guess I'm trying to get to, is that next month, I think we do need to present this. Uh, I I think the
City Council.
City Council is expecting some sort of report. And so, um,
You have one of these.
Well.
So it's, and that's what I did last time, basically, just go.
Uh, yeah, and and I, um, I, my, my recommendation would be, uh, pass it on to Mayor Kelly now.
Yeah.
And ask her if there's any, what what she would like to see. Yeah, that's all I'm saying. The other thing that I think might help me. The other thing that I think might help me a little bit is for each of the grants, and I don't know, maybe it's already online or something. But it would surely be nice to define each task because you talk in several places, task one, task two, task three. But I don't know what they are. And. It would help me, I think, understand. When we're talking about task one, what that is.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I thought about. After I wrote it, I realized, so basically. Under SB two. Parking city is task one. ADUs or task two.
Okay, so this is one.
Look, I thought there was a fourth task, residential design senior test. And then same with LEAP. So the zoning ordinance update. That was task one, reasonable accommodation, task two, housing outreach, task three, water conservation.
Okay, so we're okay, so that's that's great. That kind of gives me an idea of which ones are which.
And then same with the LCP grant is basically each bullet is task one, task two, task three.
Which page?
Page five.
Oh, okay. And and I think in the long run, this will help us because this gives more visibility to the city council and and also more transparency to the public. And hopefully, we'll be able to. Use that support to get things done a little bit faster. And and Trevor's been making good progress with the coastal commission in terms of.
Just a question, like, how? Just thinking, you know, clarity for everybody, for myself, selfishly, and then for the public in the council. Under each of these priorities, right? The current status. Planning Commission has done everything they can. Held up at coastal, you know, just kind of. And then the detail, that way, if all I want to do is see SB two, okay, it's at the it's at the coast commission. We've done everything we can. Good. Just, you know, really kind of.
And you could put those in different colored print. Coastal commission blue.
But you know, some of those denotes the status. Yeah.
What? I'd have to print the council.
Yeah. Planning Commission's done everything they can.
Mayor Mayor Kelly has asked for gants.
Okay.
So. I don't know that we'll be able to go that far because it's a little complicated. With the interactions. But at the same time, there there has to be some sort of visual reference to each of these things. Yeah, so that's why I suggest. Let her decide what she wants. By giving it to her.
Yeah, I started a gant chart and, yeah, like, do I just do the main task? And it, yeah, got, because I have gant charts for some of the grants, but some of them were just were passed already and forgotten extensions. So, yeah, I I didn't finish that.
Okay, any other questions, comments on this agenda item? Again, I'll open it up for public comment if there's any public comment. Hearing none? Seeing none?
Anything not on the list that someone wants to work on?
Yeah, so. These are big items and any big. Construction items that that we should be thinking about or that's going to happen. Just to kind of maybe get on the list, like. Make sure the. The pier is going to be done.
They're gonna do, yeah, the parking lot next summer down in the harbor. And I think they're supposed to keep the city appraised of what's going on.
They're about to interpret this. Is that part of the project?
No, that's a separate project and I don't know, but it's going to be ready next summer. Other than that, I mean, the city has been getting a lot of sort of street improvement grants. I'm not necess, I know there's a. H. Sit, they're going to put new guardrails and some crosswalks and. More flashing crosswalk signs, so. Yeah, we we told Dave and I told Josh, do you want to? Do I guess the council. Other than that, I think the construction is on the water, pipes and tanks, so that sounds sense.
Okay. Next item, agenda, agenda item is commissioner reports. Anyone have anything they'd like to report?
Okay, so the SDR committee, that last, I think it's Tuesday is sixth of December. So Dick Bruce, Jim Nash, John. Jack LoCray, he wasn't there, he was out of town. And then myself is a friend. And we are working on a city server. So we can ask the city. Questions about STRs.
Residents?
Or residents, yeah. So. A couple of questions. Did you receive the twenty four hour SBR contact list mailed in February online green? Which tells you how to contact who is managing the Trinidad STR. Did you know that the city of Trinidad receives substantial tax dollars from the operation of STR? Have you ever filed a formal complaint with the city of Trinidad regarding the STR? Do you know how to get in contact with the STR committee to share feedback or concerns? And then do you feel like the overall tone in town regarding? STRs, their impact on the town and the revenue they provide to the city is positive or negative? We just got a couple of. Questions together. Some came from another survey, you know, from another city. So. My idea for this survey was to define STR. So. In the survey, it's going to say the city's municipal code defines a short term rental as. A rental of any dwelling in whole or part within the city of Trinidad. To any person persons for transient use other than one, a permitted bed and breakfast. Two, ongoing month to month tenancy. Tendency granted to the same renter for the same dwelling. Three. One, less than thirty day rental per year, or four, a house exchange for which there is no payment. So it's going to be an anonymous survey. And. They can bring it back by mail or drop it in the city hall. So the committee wanted to get. A feeling. For how the community felt, and especially since now we've got so much money from the. QT chats. There's been a lot of conversation. I don't know, I've had some. Conversation about what are they going to do with the money and. I asked at the. Voter night when they leave the women voter. You know. With more money, could they do something with enforcement? So there's also a question, do you have any concerns regarding STRs in your neighborhood? So. Just. We just wanted to get a. Idea how the town feels. And our plan is to bring this. Survey outline to the. Joining of the city council, the planning commission. And get everybody's feedback because I personally didn't think that we could send it out, you know. Without the approval, you know, of. Council, you know. You know, the the planning. So anyway, that was our main. And then. Dick Bruce, our other chairman, was going to give. People at the meeting an outline of what we did this year. We only had, I don't know. Maybe three times. But overall, the committee started in twenty twenty. And we had, I think. So. Some of the members aren't sure that they should still have. So that's something that you might think about. Also, I think about at this joint meeting. At the community. So I will definitely be. Part of that.
So you are the planning commission representative.
Right, and tell the, you know, they get someone else there. So that's another thing that people want to be.
But we'll have to do committee assignments.
Committee assignments.
But anyway, I think. You know, this. I don't know, we have a council. And, you know, I don't know how many people would go without. But it's anonymous, so they might. You know, want to do that.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner reports?
I think that. One thing that jumped out at me that I was always impressed with is how. The positioning of the short term rentals, like, did you know that none are right next to each other? Or if they are, they're only in a certain area to to like on the survey to help people understand. That you've got regular neighbors living right next door to this short term rental and. And even the community members, a lot of thought has gone into spreading out and making it making it good for everybody. I just, that's what jumped out at me on that survey. I bet people don't really understand how much thought has gone into making that system good.
Yeah, well, especially as we worked on it a lot. One of the warnings is. I'm still flabbergasted at. The hundred feet. Well. There can be a neighbor. A house, and then there can be STR at fifty wood.
The only restriction is they can't above property limits.
Yeah, well, I mean, they can't be.
Adjacent, right? We put that restriction, right?
But that that is probably the main concern in town, in the neighborhood. Is where they're located, you know, one point in eight. Forty five, in my backyard. Because I have a big backyard.
So be a meeting, good meeting on the twenty fourth.
Right, yeah.
Any other reports?
Briefly, Water Advisory Committee met. City's making good progress on transitioning. Local control back to our water plant. And, yeah, nothing, there's some discussion about oversight responsibility to the advisory committee versus the city council, where those rules should lie. We made some good progress on that.
So who is running the water plant right now?
No, Cena is our new newer employee and he is. Basically, in essence, running it. He is still awaiting some paperwork from the state and to get kind of to that point where he's a hundred percent comfortable, but. Coleman Engineering has backed off a tremendous amount and they're more.
What's it, what's his name?
It's his last name.
Solimani?
Cena Solimani, yeah. You probably have, yeah. He has an undercover truck. It doesn't have city logos on it. I saw the other day when he was driving around. Get some new magnets, I guess.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think my staff report is. Yeah, that's what I'm working on and I will. Do you want to do new committee assignments and chair in January or wait till February for that? So we have a little time to settle in.
I like February.
That's fine, sure. All right, any changes or amendments or deletions? On future agenda items?
Think we should, as a planning commission. Think about how the wind, offshore wind is going to affect Trinidad.
Interesting point. Yeah, yeah, very good. All indications are, it might, yes. Yeah, okay.
Read the Michael Bickford and George article on the wind. I'll try to get that. Because he didn't think it's going to be amusing.
That's twenty miles.
So would you say not?
Not, they're going to be twenty miles.
Yeah, that's what this article says. I'll try to get a hold of Michael. He, I taught school. It's really good article that. Convinced me that, okay, it's going to be.
Yeah, and they they also showed pictures of them with a flat ocean. When the ocean's going, it's going to be fun out there. I mean, but if we see the red light, that's what I'm like. I don't know how they're going to do the lighting. We might get a lot more ship action. I don't know. I don't know, just.
District fund definitely has, are worried. I think. I mean, those are, that's, that's where the trawl grounds and particularly are so down for. But I think also one of the things I found really interesting is. So what they're looking at is is constructing these things for the entire coast here in Humboldt Bay, which that's exciting. That seems like that's kind of a great opportunity to Humboldt Bay. But these things are so big. That they barely fit through the jobs. So to get just a blade in or out, they are going to have to shut down the entrance to Humboldt Bay. So no boats can get in and out while they're moving, which that's kind of. Yeah, anyway. But, yeah, and the the lease area goes all the way up to off off Trinidad.
Well, there's there's clearly challenges that are above anything that. That is going to. Next three or four years, that's for sure. And then just the infrastructure of getting the power out of Humboldt County is. It's Billy. And. That that's going to be the joke point, I'm afraid.
And they can't get the power into Humboldt.
Yeah, so how's this out of power, right?
Yeah, and even the Martha Arcade and Grapes, which includes Cal Poly.
That's been amended. Yeah, they they came back and said, okay, we can handle it.
I was really surprised.
Yeah, it was, that was quite the revelation, yeah. Okay, anything else?
I did have just one question for staff, I guess, for Anton and Trevor. And tonight was a great example. Is it possible on a per packet basis? To paginate just a package? This is packet page one in addition to the regular one. That way.
Like the council, they do it for the council.
Do they? Okay, I've never paid attention to that, but that would.
I've never done, yes, okay. I think I can even do that automatically when I put together the PPG.
Yeah.
Do you staff be like, done by you?
Right. Anything else?
Thank you, all of you, for working with me and thank you for the cave. And all company meetings, some of them. I really learned a lot. City was really interesting. Keep your eyes on Mr. D. Channel. Between him and Cheryl Kelly. Is our really good.
And I I was going to say, everyone have a. Wonderful holiday, but then I realized we're all going to be back here on the twenty.
No, that's January.
January, okay.
You're right, you're right, you're absolutely right. I go the spring grant.
Go ahead and take the notes and do some.
Okay. Thank you.
We are adjourned.
And and these are for us? From the city, yeah?
I thought they were here last week. Nope, the council got there on it and we get.
It was true.
I don't have one. This is the craziest.
Oh, then you have to turn you down because it says welcome.
No, you don't want. No, you know what?